Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone, to Committee of the Whole Meeting of Tuesday, October 7, 2025. Just a reminder that this is a committee of the whole meeting, and no decisions will be made here today. There will only be recommendations that will go to our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, October 21 for consideration. A couple of reminders for today's meeting. Members of the media may sit in the upper balcony at the reserved media table. All other guests, please take a seat in the first-floor gallery. If that is full, there is overflow seating on the second floor in the Victoria Room where you will be able to see and hear the meeting. We livestream the meeting on our YouTube channel, and the recording is available after the meeting. This meeting is also broadcast on Broadcast Live on your TV, Gogico subscribers, Channel 10, HD, Channel 700, and rebroadcasted on Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. and on Saturday at noon. Because meetings are accessible to the public in all these ways, video or audio recording by members of the public is not permitted in the council chambers. This is to ensure that all attendees and those who come to make a deputation feel at ease. Thank you for your cooperation. Having said that, I'll now contradict myself and say if family members are here and the recipients of the Be a Hero Awards want their picture taken by their family as they get their award, we would certainly allow that to happen. Moving on, can I have a motion for the adoption of today's agenda? Counselor Warren, Counselor Perry, any comments, additions, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest on today's agenda? Counselor Richardson?
Thank you through you. I'll excuse myself on report 8.1.1.
Thank you. Counselor Dobell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also excuse myself on items 7.2 and 7.2.1.
Thank you. We'll advise when we get there. And good. Moving on, our first thing we're going to do today is give presentations to the Be a Hero and Environmental Hero Awards. We have planning Officer Jenna Stevens with us today, but Counselor Warren and Deborah Pearson will be giving out the awards, and I'll come down and stand there. So, Counselor Warren, I'll turn the proceedings over to you.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. This is always a special time of year to honor some of our environmental heroes. I know there are lots out there, but these are people that have been brought forward by their community as heroes. So, we're going to just get started here. And Deb Pearson, who is the chair of our Environmental Advisory Committee, if you want to come up over here. And yeah, so, we're just going to get on with things. We have our Be a Hero, who is this year Catherine McNeely. She bought a house in 2023 and saw an opportunity where the sump pump drains. That's smart. And she created a bog garden in 2024. She then planted Keystone native species, which are pollinator-friendly. Because of this, it is an effective, positive environmental act, which everybody can do to make a change from traditional gardening. Well done, Catherine. If you would like to come down and [applause]. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Deb, come on.
Oh.
This is afterwards.
We're going to put a picture afterwards.
Okeydoke. Okay. Well, congratulations. And so, we've got some, we had some lovely pictures up there of Catherine's pollinator garden. So, we're going to go on to Environmental Business Hero and Zachary Steele from Coortha Bird Control. Zachary is involved in a variety of local environmental projects centered around bird and wildlife conservation in the City of Coortha Lakes. He focused on falconry-based bird abatement, bird window collision mitigation using feather-friendly window markers, and community conservation outreach. He has also been involved in 14-plus local projects and partnerships, including being a founding member of Bird Friendly Coortha Lakes and the Fleming Bird Conservation Committee. Come on down, Zachary. Well done.[700.01][700.01][applause] Congratulations. Okay, and now we're on to Diane and Glenn Hunt. They built a straw bale house on an angle to optimize solar radiation with smart windows, a fireplace with a warming oven, and solar panels. They planted trees on their property and bought an electric vehicle. They also helped maintain the butterfly garden in the Rosedale Parquet, which, if you haven't been there, is quite beautiful. As well, they managed and maintained the garbage and recycling at the Rosedale Parquet. Thank you very much, Diane and Glenn Hunt. Come on down.[758.18][758.18][applause] Okay. And the next one is Ashton Goble, Lily Anna Goble, Caprice Henwood, and Aiden Peel. This group of young people worked tirelessly to clear trees and help out wherever needed after the ice storm. And we needed a lot of help after that ice storm. So, thanks so much. Come on down. Well done.[807.01][807.01][applause] Now, we have John Bush is a grounds director of Port 32 Community and Bob Cajun. He has a long background in conservation management. He volunteered with Bob Cajun Public School, Settlers Village, Bob Cajun Wilderness Park, Big Island, and Coortha Land Trust Hammer Family Nature Reserve. He also encouraged others to volunteer and ensures that Bob Cajun and Coortha Lakes continues to flourish. And I'm just going to add a couple other things. He was, he is also co-president of Environmental Action Bob Cajun, and he's also a big proponent of active transportation. And well done, John. Come on down.[879.37][879.37][applause] Now, we have Julia Taylor. And Julia is a passionate environmentalist. She has been instrumental in tree planting. Her business, Country Cupboard, is focused on reducing, reusing, and recycling. She has implemented a program where a discount is offered if a reusable jar is brought and used for the bulk food. She has always encouraged others to be mindful of the environment. Well done, Julia. Thank you.[939.51][939.51][applause] And we have, next one is Kristy McCabe. And she is the interim director of Planning and Development Services at Coortha Conservation and is a certified forest therapy guide. She has built a career in environmental protection and has worked for many environmental organizations. She has taught others how to slow down, breathe, listen, and reconnect with the world around them. She, she has always made time to elevate someone's understanding or deepen their experience in nature, whether it's a colleague, a friend, or a stranger on a trail. She has also led cleanup efforts with strength and resilience through the grief and destruction of Kenried Park after the ice storm. Thank you. Come on down, Kristy.[1024.93][1024.93][applause] And last but not least, we have Bonita O'Neil. She has made significant contributions to the Lindsay Community Gardens, a showcase for environmentally responsible gardening. These gardens are hosted by Fleming College and includes 88 individual plots, as well as shared herb, pollinator gardens, an orchard of 15 trees, and demonstration of native perennials in a perennial bed. She's tended the herb pollinator garden, entry plantings, and some other communal spaces. She designed the garden layout, did weeding, and kept the pathways topped off with woodchips, and labeled plants for the convenience of the gardens and visitors. Well done. Thank you, Bonita. Come on down.[1100.71][1100.71][applause] So, we're just going to take five minutes and to take a couple pictures at the back, and we will return. Thank you.
So, we're taking, we're taking a five-minute recess. Thank you. I'll call the meeting back to order. Moving on to item five in our agenda, we have deputations. We have one deputation today, Ms. Emma Eakin, and concerns relating to student/boarding houses. Ms. Eakin, you have five minutes.
Good day, Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. Our family has owned property in the Coortha Lakes region for the better part of 60 years. We are invested. Currently, we live in an enclave of 147 homes known as the ravines of Lindsay, located at Angeline Street North and Connolly Road. These homes were built in the early 2020s and were intended, to the best of our knowledge, to be single-family homes. Many of us are starting to become very, very concerned that we are the canary in the coal mine, a harbinger of what to come. Patterns of behavior have emerged, and some of these behaviors demonstrate, at best, a lack of caring; at worst, neglect. It is clear that multiple houses were purchased for the sole purpose of renting. Some are short-term, some are longer-term, some are high occupancy. It is clear that there are several individuals living in many of these homes, often in excess of 10 people. Many of these homes are not cared for. Garbage is evident on lawns, boulevards. Lawns are full of tall grass and large weeds. More than a year ago, I inquired with the city about the grass and weeds growing too large and tall. I was told nothing can be done. The bylaw is changing. Lawns and weeds can grow to allow pollinators to survive. Many of the homes that are rented don't seem to understand the garbage collection recycling procedures, or the importance of maintaining a property. Two of the high occupancy houses went so far as to store their garbage in the garages of the two homes, when the garbage and recycling services refused to take what they put at the curb, despite several attempts at educating these residents. This encouraged rats. Two of the worst offenders of allowing the grass to grow and lack of adherence to garbage collection rules have neighbors with very, very young children. These children were subjected to a higher risk of encountering snakes, ticks, and other animal life. While I want the pollinators to survive, my husband and I have just recently planted over 40 pollinator plants, shrubs. We want them to survive. Of course, we do. But maybe there's different ways to do that. Perhaps, we should take a look at why we allow these high occupancy property owners to pave their front lawns to allow for additional parking pads. There are two in our subdivision alone. When I inquired with the city about the paving over, I was told nothing we can do about that. It could be seen as hardscaping. I and many others in our neighborhood have reported concerns with these high occupancy homes. During my first inquiry with the city in 2023, I was informed that Lindsay had a bylaw that required boarding houses to be a minimum of 300 meters apart. In June of '24, I reported that we had at least four of these boarding houses that were not 300 meters apart. When I followed up after several weeks, I was told nothing can be done. This law is likely going to change. It is my understanding that this law has not changed. The high occupancy houses are still here. The driveways frequently have multiple cars parked, some illegally, making use of the sidewalks difficult, even going so far as to driving over the neighbor's lawn just because they didn't want to move the car behind them. We see the lawns full of weeds and cut infrequently. Each of the high occupancy houses has drivers to bring individuals to work or school. They often speed, creating even more risk for the residents. One of these houses is for sale. My husband and I went to see it during an open house. It is clear that what was a four-bedroom, single-family home was converted to nine bedrooms. This is supported by the fact that the home has eight bathrooms. I have credible information that up to five students were in some of these bedrooms. I have credible information that in the tribute development just close to us, at least one individual has purchased one block of townhomes, a total of six units. How does this support the notion of affordable housing? I recently reported a possible fifth boarding house that is only three doors down from an existing one. I was told that the boarding house bylaw could not be enforced, that these careless absentee property owners could continue to buy and set up boarding houses right next to one another, and nothing can be done. Owning a house or property comes with responsibilities. The responsibilities include maintaining a reasonable level of cleanliness, following the requirements to obtain permits. It is clear that the household Hennessy Crescent on sale right now did not adhere to these basic requirements. Many of us are starting to feel like we live in a slum. We need to have laws that provide for the safety, security, and living in harmony for all residents. We need governance and oversight that will ensure that there is adherence to the laws. We need a city that will be proactive and do the right things.
I'll get you to wrap up, please.
I promise, one minute. Please don't say that common sense cannot be legislated, that you don't have the resources, that it is impossible to police these property owners, that there are other priorities. Please say that you will act with urgency, introduce legislation that will put reasonable limits on the number of occupants and the number of high occupancy homes in a specified geography, ensure that resources are provided for oversight, do better than other municipalities that ignored these issues until it was too late. Residents may start Residents may start selling. More neighborhoods may turn into this, certainly in the new buildings that are going on, the new build. Lindsay is going through significant change. Significant change needs strong leadership. We hope that you will be that leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd just stay there for a minute, please. If you'd stay at the podium for a minute in case there are questions. I got a motion to receive the deputation and to forward it to the council meeting of the twenty-first. Councilor Dobell, Deputy Mayor McDonald. Are there any questions for the deputy? Councilor Dobell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have had a number of conversations with Ms. Eakin. I want to thank you for your presentation today. I will advise that I intend to speak to this at the council meeting later this month.
Thank you. Any other questions for the deputy? Seeing none, thank you for coming today. And your deputation will be, as Councilor Dobell said, extracted at the council meeting of October twenty-first, where council will make a decision on what to do with it. And I would suspect that at that time, it'll be referred to staff to bring back a report on what can be done.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. All in favor? And that's passed. Also, I need I need a motion that the presentation for Be a Hero Award be received and that the information be forwarded to the next council meeting. Councilor Warren, Councilor Ashmore, all in favor? And that's passed. Item six is correspondence, and we have item six point one, which is the 2024 Detachment Board Annual Report from Inspector Flindle. Could I have a motion that it be received and forwarded to the next council meeting? Councilor Richardson, Councilor Perry. Any comments or questions on that report? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's passed. Now move into presentations. First presentation we have is on Parks and Recreation Draft Strategic Plan Presentation. And I believe that Director Johnson, you are going to introduce that and introduce the folks who are going to make the presentation. And I believe they're online. So whenever you're ready, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. To the members of council, I'm pleased to present the draft final report for the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. The first strategic plan for Parks and Recreation was completed in 2004. So since that time, much has changed. Our community has grown. Recreation trends have shifted, and many of our parks and facilities have naturally aged. More than twenty years later, it is timely to revisit this important document to ensure our programs, facilities, and open spaces continue to meet the needs of residents today and into the future. The updated strategic plan provides a high-level review of recreation services and facilities across the municipality. It identifies emerging community needs, sets appropriate service levels, and recommends where new or enhanced programs, facilities, and parks may be required through to 2040. The plan does not commit the city to immediate spending, but it does provide a framework to guide future decision-making that will be incorporated into the city's long-term financial plan. Many of its recommendations will serve as a starting point for more detailed work, such as facility condition assessments, program-specific need studies, or business case evaluations. This has been a comprehensive process carried out over the past eighteen months. It has included four phases: data collection and community consultation, needs assessments for programs, facilities, parks, and service delivery, financial and organizational analysis, and draft revisions. The process has involved strong engagement from residents, staff, user groups, and stakeholders, ensuring the plan reflects the voices of our community. The draft plan is being presented today and will be made available for public comment until October twenty-first. The final document will then be presented at the November eighteenth council meeting. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the team that supported this initiative. They're joining us online. So Ryan Smith, manager of Parks and Recreation; Shelley Cooper, Community Partnerships and Program Supervisor with Parks and Recreation; and the lead consulting firm Think Design. So Leandra from Think Design and her team will walk us through the highlights of the strategic plan and its key recommendations. Following the presentation, we'll welcome questions and any feedback from council. So with that, Leandra, I'll let you start your presentation.
Thank you. Will you be sharing the slides on your end in the council chambers? I don't, I can't see on, oh, there it is, okay, perfect. Okay, thank you, Jen. So my name is Leandra Coriali Ferguson. I am a planner and senior associate at Think Design, and I'm joined by Mary Catherine Mihak of Mihak Kelly and Associates. Did you want to introduce yourself quickly?
Sure. Good, good afternoon, everyone. Hi, I'm Mary Catherine Mihak, and I work with Mihak Kelly and Associates, and I've been working along with Leandra in preparation of the plan, and my focus is facilities, indoor and outdoor facilities and the plans.
Okay, next slide, please. So today, the agenda is to provide a quick project overview. We'll go through some key directions and recommendations from the draft plan and then allow some time for questions and discussion. So project overview. So as Jen mentioned, this plan will cover the next fifteen years through to 2040. It includes programs and events, indoor and outdoor recreation facilities, parks, and delivery of those services. Plan inputs included consultation data, review of relevant documents, facility use and program data, comparison with similar municipalities, recreation trends, budgets, policy, organizational information, mapping, et cetera. So many different data inputs. This graphic shows the four phases of the plan. We're now sort of straddling phase three and four, those two tasks in bold. Right now, the plan is posted online as of today. It will stay up until the twenty-first to allow community review and engagement. We're presenting this draft right now. After this and after online consultation is closed, we'll meet with the staff team again, determine any final revisions that need to be made, and then the final plan will be brought to council in November. Consultation was a very important part of the project. It was a very extensive amount of activities we did, and engagement was great. A lot of people came out of, the online survey responses were very high, so it's always nice to see. We did fourteen council and staff interviews, one interview with the Parks Advisory Committee, three open houses. Two were in the beginning of the project to introduce the project and get feedback, and then the third was to share the draft recommendations with the community. There's been ongoing online consultation on Jumpin' Cortha Lakes that's sort of adapted as the, as the project went along. As I mentioned, over a thousand responses to an online survey that was posted. We did a random household survey as well of seven hundred and fifty households, a user group survey, and those are for the scheduled, user groups that use scheduled facilities regularly. We had twenty-three groups respond to that. There were seven group interviews with community groups and different organizations. And then we had three staff and committee workshops to discuss the draft recommendations as well. Plan overview. So we'll start with programs and events. This is, now, the following slides all provide sort of key directions, a summary of recommendations. It's not a full list of all the recommendations of the plan. So for a variety of programs and events, expand capacity for high-demand programs such as aquatics, day camps, fitness classes, pickleball, baseball, and soccer, through facility expansion and staffing. Expand outdoor program options. This gets to demand that, that we did hear from the community for more outdoor recreation, as well as providing a stopgap measure to expand capacity in certain programs that can be moved outdoors as well, while facility development is happening. Add a community development coordinator, or CDC, to focus on event support and park activation. For gaps in supply, explore solutions for providing more programs at Fennel and Falls Community Center and Forbert Memorial Pool Facility. Add more drop-in opportunities, and those are particularly getting at feedback from youth and adults. And work with volunteers to support seniors programs, as is currently the case. Adding a community development coordinator to focus on seniors program development in the future, if that is required. I'll go to indoor facilities, and I'll let Mary Catherine speak to that.
Thank you, Leandra. As you can see, there's a number of key directions under topics: ice pads, gymnasiums, pools, fitness and walking tracks, and multipurpose rooms. But I'm just going to talk about the slide collectively. So the strategy recommends preparing a a recreation facility master plan to confirm and detail the need for indoor hubs to serve each of four general areas, with the understanding that the Lindsay Recreation Comp, Lindsay Recreation Center, will continue to serve the existing urban area. The four areas for consideration are South Lindsay, where considerable residential development will occur; Fennel Falls Bob Cajun, which will be a second growth area; the Emily O'Mee Mambers area; and the Woodville Little Britain Oakwood area. The need for specific hubs will be potentially, will potentially replace existing aging arenas with twin pads and include required additional facilities such as gymnasiums, fitness facilities, walking tracks, and multipurpose space. And this, all of these will be confirmed and detailed in the recommended master plan along with proposed timing for development and costs and next steps for initial projects. But a priority should be placed on assessing Ops as the first potential location for a twin pad, multi-use indoor hub to serve population growth in the south portion of Lindsay. Since any new build projects will take time to materialize, so to satisfy the short-term need for access to a municipal gymnasium, agreements for increased access to Fleming College Fieldhouse and school gyms should be pursued. The recommended master plan should also be used to investigate the need to expand the Forbert Pool and to confirm the future of standalone community rooms to continue to serve as local community hubs. To inform the future role of the standalone community rooms, the municipality can work with the relevant community management committees to document data and trends on their use. Next slide, please. Outdoor facilities. The approach to, for ball dimes and athletic fields is to optimize the use of all existing facilities before determining if building new ones is required, which means adjusting the definition of prime time, extending and increasing the use on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays, charging hourly fees, and where possible, distributing use more widely across the season to reduce pressure on a limited number of weeks each year. For any needed fields, considering opportunities to work with other agencies to share provision through agreements will promote greater use and cost savings. With respect to courts, the recommendation is to improve existing and increase the number of tennis, both tennis and pickleball courts. And in terms of facility allocation and agreements, we are recommending using a formula-based allocation to distribute prime time for scheduled facilities and to develop and post an honor system for use of shared tennis and pickleball courts. And finally, continuing to monitor use to verify unmet demand for facilities is essential and ongoing, an ongoing requirement before investing in provision. Thank you, and back to Leandra.
Okay, I will take you through key directions for parks. So Parkland Hierarchies, Supply, and Dedication. We provided an updated Parkland classification system. That's where you have your different park types, and each park type is defined in terms of use and appropriate facilities and size and supply, those kinds of details. For urban areas, we've recommended that the municipality aim to maintain the current provision rate, overall Parkland provision rate of three point two hectares per thousand people. So that's what, where it is currently. That's a good, good provision rate. All factors together, it was decided to aim to maintain that as development's occurring and/or an eight-hundred-meter service area. So kind of taking those two factors based on the particular context. For rural areas, where there isn't going to be development in the next, over the term of the plan, the focus should be on updating destination and community parks and upgrading parks so that they better fulfill those roles. For Parkland, Parkland dedication, we provided some, some direction, including avoiding accepting parquettes, aim for accepting linear parcels to develop the trail system, or at minimum, neighborhood parks. And if, if that size of a parcel is not available, then trying to assemble parcels so that you have a larger park parcel. So if, if it's a small piece that you're getting from development, trying to place that adjacent to a school or an existing park, just to allow more recreation opportunity at the site. Casual use facilities, these are all those amenities and facilities that are at the parks that are open for free use. We've provided some recommendations for additions to supply, including skate parks and pump trucks, a splash pad, potentially a second splash pad near the end of the term, and amenities for all ages such as table tennis or outdoor fitness equipment along trails and in parks. The Parks Master Plan, which I believe is already underway, will provide further specific park improvements, including those in the urban areas and water improvements, waterfront improvements, sorry. Next slide. So we looked at the municipality, and it divided into four quadrants geographically based on access and, you know, water barriers and things like that to get a better sense of how the rural community is served. So this slide is listing a few sites that we identified that would be ideal for improvements or upgrading. So if they're currently functioning as a neighborhood park, we've suggested improvements so that they're a destination or a community park. Most of these recommendations as well are for a design that would include community consultation. So for example, Pleasant Point, Mariposa Estates, Pump House Parts, et cetera, that is undertake a design process for those parks where you consult with the community, what makes sense there, what is needed there. And then after the design, you would have a sense of capital cost. So in the implementation plan, these are costed as designs. There are also a number of parcels that were identified that could be considered for disposal. These are small parcels, not really used as parks, not really used as the community, by the community for recreation, but they do pose an operations burden as they need to be maintained and monitored. These parcels, if they could be disposed, then that funding could be reinvested into the needed park improvements listed in these areas. Next slide. We also looked at policies and bylaws, accessibility, climate, and cemeteries. And some of the key directions include policies for tree canopy naming, Parkland dedication, and cash and loo. We discussed accessibility upgrades and updating the staff operations parks manual to be, just to elevate accessibility a bit more. We covered playground, park spaces, lighting, shade, and prioritization of upgrades. For climate, we recommended a tree canopy strategy, continuing to invest in the tree canopy reserve fund. And we also provided some direction and best practices on naturalization and pollinator gardens. For cemeteries, we recommended exploring columbaria and green burial grounds. Okay, back to Mary Catherine. Okay, back to Mary Catherine.
Oh, I didn't realize I was doing this. Next slide, please. Oh, I can't see if that is too small, sorry.
Do you want me to?
Yes, please. I didn't realize I was doing this section.
Oh, okay, sorry. So Service Delivery. Organizational Structure. For Park Staff, we recommended maintenance management software, revising operations work zones to align with those four quadrants I had discussed in the park section. We discussed horticulture care metrics to inform where additional staff and training may be needed. We discussed the need, the need for volunteers, existing volunteers and supporting them in terms of horticulture, volunteer management committees, and seniors programs. We also recommend a new community engagement slash outreach slash partnerships, that the title can be finessed, coordinator position that would, would help manage all the many different volunteers and partnerships that are already existing and that we recommend through the plan. In general, there are some recommendations for role clarity, competitive wages, professional development, and regular reviews of workload. In terms of policies and bylaws, there are a few new policies that we recommended: community engagement, digital accessibility, volunteer, environmental sustainability, et cetera. I won't read the, all of them. And then for existing policies, we recommended some updates to tree canopy, street facility and park naming, the general public parks and facilities bylaw, as well as the unopened road allowances leading to water bylaw. Service Planning and Evaluation. Further develop service planning and monitoring and evaluation and use the results to inform service provision. So Mary Catherine touched on this earlier in facilities, just building up the data set of information to help inform decision-making. Conduct a five-year review and update of the plan. So five-year review would be a smaller undertaking and a 10- or 15-year timeframe would be your full update. Facilitate joint planning sessions with other service providers. For Resources and Asset Management, regular condition assessments with a standardized scale should be used. Use comprehensive data collection methods. Integrate climate risk into the asset management assessment. Use asset management software and a broad set of KPIs to monitor performance and enhance coordination between departments. All right. Implementation. So the implementation section of the plan is a series of tables that summarizes all of the recommendations and provides suggested timing of when they should be undertaken: short, medium, mid, late, or late, as well as costing. So in total, there's 183 recommendations. 143 are operational or strategic in nature. So there's not necessarily, not usually a cost associated with those in the implementation plan. Operational recommendations would be carried out by existing staff under existing workloads, so there is a cost associated, but it's not one that we can easily define. New staffing would be an operational recommendation, and we've provided a salary in those cases. There's 22 capital recommendations and 18 studies or designs, recommendations that are for studies or designs. It doesn't mean that there's 18 individual studies or designs because certain recommendations will fall under the same study, for example. So costing is provided where possible, or what were applicable. Some capital costs are to be determined pending the outcomes of the design or the study or partnership arrangements. Staffing, additional staff salaries are included where possible, as I mentioned, and associated workload recommendations are noted. So if there's a few recommendations that we, it's understood that they will be the responsibility of a new staff member, that's noted, so you can easily make the connection. Timing, as I mentioned, there's short, medium, mid, late, and late, so all the way from now till 15 years. Some initiatives are ongoing, so they'll be started and they should just be continuous as long as they're relevant or needed. And the ultimate timing and action to be taken should be flexible. This is a high-level guiding document, so it's meant to, to help and inform the annual budget and work planning process. So annually, as, as that's all been decided, you're going through the budget process, this plan can help you decide what should be done this year. But the ultimate decision to approve those will go through the budget process. This table summarizes costs from each service area for each term. So it's broken down by each term, and then you've got the total cost. So overall, for the 15 years, the total cost is just over 22 million, with the majority of the costs being spread pretty equally over the mid and late terms. You'll notice, probably notice, resources and asset management doesn't have any costs in there. It's because all of the recommendations are operational or strategic in nature. So it doesn't mean that they're free, they are, you know, being conducted by staff, but there's just not a distinct cost attached to them. So just to highlight, because we've gone over recommendations, but since you haven't seen the implementation table in this presentation, just to highlight what's the timing of all of these key actions. So key short-term actions include the Parks Master Plan and the Recreation Facility Master Plan, data collection for ongoing planning and evaluation, initiate the programs and service delivery actions. Many, if not most, of the recommendations in those two service areas are operational or strategic in nature, and many of them will be ongoing, so they should be initiated and monitored as time goes on. Initiate actions related to increasing use of existing facilities. So facilities provide some recommendations for how to accommodate demand with existing facilities, so those actions should be taken immediately. Tennis and pickleball, pickleball supply improvements, and selected park designs, policy updates, and skate park upgrades. Key midterm actions include conducting the Tree Canopy Strategy, selected park designs, implementation of prepared park designs from the previous term, possible splash pad, skate park and pump track, and a possible cricket field and upgrades to ball diamonds and courts, and begin implementing actions from the Parks Master Plan and Recreation Facility Master Plan. Key mid-to-late term actions, so now we're getting close to around seven to 10 years, I believe, continue implementing the Recreation Facility Master Plan, those arena hubs, gymnasiums, et cetera, and the Parks Master Plan. Conduct a Forbert Memorial Pool Fitness Facility Expansion Study. Continue with facility improvements, for example, diamonds, fields, and courts, informed by the data collection that started in the short term, apparent need and partnerships, and selected park designs and implementation of prepared park designs. Key late-term actions include the plan update. So at this point, getting close to 10, 15 years, this plan should be updated and continue implementing actions that are still ongoing from the Recreation Facility Master Plan and Parks Master Plan. If required, conduct or undertake further improvements to facilities such as adding lights to accommodate use. And again, selected park designs and implementation of prepared park designs and a possible splash pad and pump track if need is still apparent at that time. Next steps. So as we mentioned before, the plan is up right now on jumping Corthe Lakes as of this morning. It will be open for comment from anybody in the community until the 21st. We'll meet with the staff team to discuss any required revisions, make the final changes, and the final plan will be brought to council in November. That is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions and comments, I'll get to you in one second. I just wanted to point out that we have Mr. Peter Sanderson, who is the Chair of the Parks Advisory Committee with us today. Thank you for coming. So, Councilor Warren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this. It was quite a bit of reading, but very enjoyable. There's lots of interesting stuff in here. I have a question. There's a group in Bob Cajun, actually, that is looking at upgrading a a skateboard park. Now, I'm just wondering, it says pump track, so I'm wondering, are skateboard, do kids really use skateboards? Or are they BMX bikes or whatever a pump track is? That's my first question.
Sure, I can take that. So they are different, they're similar, but a skateboard park is what you're probably imagining what you've seen in the municipality. A pump track is, is a track that usually goes in a circle, and it can have berms and jumps, and it can be concrete or dirt. And it's typically used for dirt bikes, whereas a skate park can be used for, with skateboards, bikes, scooters, et cetera. So they're, they definitely overlap, but there is a bit of a difference. And we do have recommendations with funding attached to do the upgrades to the skateboard parks in the municipality as well.
So seeing that there is more use of skateboard parks, when you actually want to call it something, is it still a skateboard park? Or is there some more, a newer word for that kind of park?
No, skateboard park is still used.
Okay, thank you, that's good. I have a couple other quick questions. For pickleball, you know, maybe for inside pickleball in the winter, looking at maybe leasing, working with the school boards to lease gymnasiums, did you look at that? I think I saw something in there about that.
I can answer that. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we did talk about working with the school boards to see if there can be additional access to gymnasiums, particularly in the more rural areas where space is at a premium and the existing spaces can't necessarily accommodate things like pickleball. And also within the, within Lindsay itself, looking at, trying to get access through an agreement to the Fleming College Fieldhouse. Because even though we have recommended gymnasiums, there'll be, it'll be a while before, before anything comes online in terms of being constructed. So yes, we do talk about looking at those opportunities to not only meet short-term needs where, where they exist for other things as well, like basketball and volleyball, but also to continue those into the future and allow indoor pickleball to occur in these, in these spaces. So yes, you're correct.
Just one more, if you don't mind. So specifically in Bob Cajun, are you looking at, down the line, expanding the pool itself or just the workout room?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Those were two separate directions. One was to look at, do a business plan or feasibility study to, to expand the fitness facility component of the pool. But the, and that could be done separately from the recommendation that was presented with respect to looking at the need in the longer term to develop the pool into a larger facility, a 25-meter pool and with possibly a leisure component. So there's two different components to that direction.
Counselor Ashmore.
Thank you. Through you to our consulting team, thanks for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. Talking about pools and splash pads, pools, we, at one time, Lindsay had a really nice outdoor pool. Fortunately, it's gone now, but I know I learned my swimming lessons there. And outdoor pools still are quite popular in communities across Ontario, across the country. Did you look at that option as well? They're certainly not as expensive as building new, new pools in different areas. But that's something, I'm just wondering if you looked at that option.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, actually, we didn't look at that because typically we don't necess, we don't generally go that route because of the short, the very short season of outdoor pools. And people are looking for more than just, you know, a lap pool. They want leisure, the leisure component and some other, you know, amenities that come with some, some of those facilities. So we, and they, even outdoor pools can be pretty expensive to provide. So we're, we look first at providing an indoor pool. And I suppose if that is absolutely out, you know, not something that's feasible for the municipality, the second option might be, might be an indoor pool, but that would come after an assessment of, you know, what is, what exactly is it going to cost to provide a, a second indoor facility? So no, we didn't, we didn't look at that.
Okay, and finally, around the beginning of the presentation, I, you had shown that you had divided the city of Corthe Lakes into four different quadrants. The southeast quadrant, I saw the word disposal. I wasn't sure what that meant. Are you looking at different parks that you propose selling? Or what does that word disposal mean? Just so there's no confusion with the public there. I'm just not sure what that meant.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that's referring to certain parcels that are not really functioning as parks right now. The municipality owns very many parcels throughout, throughout its geography. So we identified a few that aren't functioning as parks. They're not really providing a recreation value, and they could be sold. So that's what disposal means, typically sold or some other arrangement. And then the money can be reinvested into needed park improvements.
Okay, I'd like to see a list, I think for council to see that list, what those disposal sites are going to be, because that's just, I think we should at least have, be, become aware of what these potential areas are. They could be used, they may not be, but just, it would be good if we could get a list of those properties that you're considering disposing of.
Counselor, we wouldn't, any disposal of property would have to come to council and be declared surplus before anything else happened. So I don't think you have to worry that it's going to be sold out from under you.
And just, just a question, I mean, I just wanted to know. Thanks.
Counselor Dobell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that this is, this is a great report. I won't pretend to have read all 331 pages, but I did glance through the report and I read the, 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 the main report. I really like the, the statement about the alignment to strategic priorities because our parks, quite honestly, the, this, this speaks probably louder than anything as to who we are as a community. And so I think it's very important that this be done well. And so to that line, I mean, the, the alignment to our strategic priorities, namely a healthy environment, an exceptional quality of life, a vibrant and growing economy, and finally, it reinforces good government by providing an evidence-based financially responsible framework, framework for investment and service delivery, aligning recreation planning with long-term financial strategies and corporate priorities. Again, I will be reading through this report more carefully, but my first glance at it, very well done, and thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Yeah, through you. Thank you very much for the report. I sit on the Parks Board, so I've seen this before. But I just want to bring up exactly what Counselor Warren had brought up before, is school boards. And I've brought this up before. The schools have lots to offer. They have soccer fields, they have gyms. I don't understand why they wouldn't want to be part of this plan. Back in the day, we used to use them, those soccer fields and gyms for years. So as we go forward, we really, there's peak times that we need all these facilities. It's a shame that we have to go build soccer fields, and I see half a dozen soccer fields in City Corthe Lakes sitting on schoolyards that aren't used, and they're very good. It doesn't make sense to me. But anyway, anything we can do to, to see if they can get on board, we used to do it, and it could save us a lot of money in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Joyce.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I guess apologies to council and my constituents. I had a very intense weekend, and yesterday, something had to give, and I have not read the report. But I will, and I know I've got till October 1st for my public But I will, and I know I've got till October 1st for my public comment. But thanks to Director Johnson and her team. I know it took 18 months to put this together. And I look forward to going through it and may have some questions for Director Johnson later. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richardson.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. Mine's more of a comment, just watching how this entire project has evolved. In essence, it's the roadmap to all our communities and it's showing where we can provide more community benefits. And it exposes like our changing needs. For example, cricket pitches. Looking at our capacity challenges when it comes to our pool programs. It's really a great report. Like I said, I've had an opportunity the last 18 months watching it develop. But I think, you know, when you do take the time to go through it, you can actually see how we're evolving and how our parks and recreation is evolving. So I just wanted to give kudos to what we have in front of us today.
Thank you. I have a couple of things I'm just a little concerned about. In the key parks direction and in the indoor facilities, we refer to the northwest, the southwest, the southeast and the northeast. And in the northeast, we talk about the Burnt River Community Center and Centennial Park. But there are other areas up there like Kirkfield, Cobocock, Norland, Kinmount. Are we doing anything, when I think of Norland, I think of Ward Park. And having been to that facility, are we missing an opportunity there where we could do something for those folks that are more northerly than, say, Burnt River as an example? I don't know who, I don't know if it's Ryan or Jen or the consultants who... Have you looked at those areas and is there anything we can reasonably do up there?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just pulling up the map right now so I can see it myself. So we've got northeast where is Burnt River and northwest, which is where we have Norland, Cobocock, Kirkfield, Bolsover, Seabright, Woodville. So that is what we've called northwest. So we identified Dalton, Carden are quite far, far north, but they're sort of closer together. So we've left it sort of up to staff in the community to determine which one of those should be focused on. But we have a recommendation to focus on one of these and improve, and I'm speaking to parks in particular, improve the outdoor recreation opportunities there. We've also identified Bolsover Community Center Park as well for improvements. And then Cobocock and Norland, I believe we did as well. I know that Cobocock is very well supplied already with parks. And I'm not sure, Mary Catherine, if you had anything from indoor facilities? I think for the north, it was Bob Cajun Fellon Falls was sort of the hub we were focusing on.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we looked, the way we assess the need for facilities was we looked at outdoor facilities, I mean, because that would be parks-based facilities. Where we looked at what's existing and what's needed and where improvements or additions might occur. So there are areas outside, in the farther rural areas where we have identified the potential to provide additional or better use additional either ball dimes or soccer fields that are in place to schedule use. So that might involve improvements or upgrades to those spaces. But we definitely looked at all of the facilities in every community. So we worked from, you know, where are the facilities and in which parks? And how can we improve those facilities to better serve the community, local community, and sometimes the community as a whole, if there are other needs that could be met at these facilities by people having to travel a little bit to reach another field or whatever. So yes, we did. Long story, long version, short version of a long answer. Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. Within your presentation, we didn't mention those specific areas. And I just wanted to make sure that we certainly had looked at them and that they were considered in the grand picture. So thank you for that. Seeing no more questions, can I get a motion to receive the presentation and forward it to the next council meeting? Counselor, Deputy Mayor McDonald, Counselor Richardson, all in favor? And that passes. Director, did you want to do anything with the report? Did you want to give anything with the report? Or are you good if we just receive it and then forward it to? Okay. I got a motion to receive the report and forward it to the next council meeting. Counselor Richardson, Counselor Warren, are there any questions or comments on the report? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming today, folks. I appreciate the overview and we'll look forward to this coming to fruition. And Mr. Sanderson, thank you for joining us.
Goodbye.
Bye.
Moving on in our agenda, we have item 7.2, which is the Angeline Street North Municipal Class Environmental Assessment Presentation. And for that, we have our own manager of infrastructure design and construction, Corby Purdy. And I will let him introduce the folks from the Ainley Group. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Angeline Street North EA project was initiated as a result of previous corridor studies for Kent Street and Colburn Street. Those studies identified the need for expanding the intersection of Angeline Street and Kent Street, the intersection of Angeline Street and Colburn Street, and the section of Angeline Street between those two intersections. Staff retained consulting firm Ainley Group, who's been working diligently on this project. The study is nearing completion and today Ainley Group is going to provide an update on the study findings to date, including preferred alternatives. Before I hand it over to Ainley Group, I would like to recognize City Coortle Lakes staff members Joe Kelly and John Innis for their hard work on this project. Now, I'll pass it over to Alex Wilkinson from Ainley Group for the presentation.
Gentlemen, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Corby. I think we'll start on the next slide if we could please go ahead, Juan. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alex Wilkinson and I'm from Ainley Group, the engineer and consultant assisting the city with this project. Also joining me from Ainley Group today is Scott Reynolds, who will be helping me answer any questions that might come up. Today, we'll be discussing the proposed reconstruction of Angeline Street North, generally between and including its intersections with Kent Street West and Colburn Street West. The exact limit to the south is generally to Broad Street. This project is proceeding as a Schedule B activity through the municipal class environmental process, which you may hear me refer to interchangeably as the MCEA process or EA process. Today's presentation will summarize the efforts undertaken through the MCEA process, present the preferred alternative recommended by it, and time permitting, provide an opportunity afterwards for attendees to discuss the project with the team. Next slide, please. The initial stages of any MCEA process involve establishing a problem and opportunity statement that will guide the process. Our problem and opportunity statements are shown on this slide. And to summarize them, this project originally stems from the 2012 Transportation Master Plan, which identified traffic capacity constraints along Kent Street and Colburn Street. As Corby just said, standalone studies were completed for the Kent and Colburn corridors, which recommended lane configurations for their intersection with Angeline Street North. And both studies also recommended that a separate environmental assessment be completed for the Angeline Street corridor itself. With the proposed reconstruction of Angeline Street, it also provides an opportunity to improve the corridor, such as by incorporating active transportation facilities and replacing aging servicing infrastructure. Next slide, please. The notice of project commencement for this EA was issued in 2019 and we began background technical activities shortly thereafter. And these background technical activities provided some understanding of the corridor's constraints and opportunities. And from this understanding, alternatives 1 to 4 were conceptualized as design options for the proposed reconstruction. And we took these alternatives to Public Information Centre Number 1 and presented them to the public. Generally speaking, the feedback received through PIC number 1 was considered typical of what might be expected for any road reconstruction project, especially one that involves potential right-of-way widening. Next slide, please. Over the next couple of slides, I have figures showing the alternatives. And for brevity's sake and what I imagine the resolution's sake, I'll just describe them in general terms. But alternatives 1 and 2, they both incorporate the lane configurations recommended by the previous corridor studies. But with alternative 1, it favors more of a westward shift of the road's alignment within the right-of-way. And next slide, please. And for all, this is alternative 2. And in this one, it's the same as alternative 1, but now it's favoring more of an eastward shift of the road's alignment. Next slide, please. Now, alternatives 3 and 4, they're similar to 1 and 2 in that they look at an east and a west shift. Here is alternative 3. But if we go over to alternative 4, we'll see that the, next slide, please. We should be showing alternative 4 here. But with alternatives 3 and 4, at the Kent Street intersection, they both have a reduced number of lanes than that recommended by the previous corridor study for Kent Street. Next slide, please. So through our initial evaluations of these alternatives and the feedback from PIC number 1, it became clear to us that the Kent Street West intersection was associated with the greatest potential for impacts to adjacent landowners. Because of the reduced number of lanes proposed by alternatives 3 and 4, deviated considerably from that recommended by the previous corridor study for Kent Street, we concluded that they wouldn't provide an adequate level of service to address the problem statement and therefore were not carried forward for further evaluation. The remaining alternatives 1 and 2, we evaluated them with respect to multiple environments that we have noted there. Now, from this evaluation with respect to the multiple environments, alternative 2 was tentatively selected to be the preliminary preferred alternative as it was found to provide the best balance of impacts to the properties in the Kent Street West intersection area. It was believed that a minor refinement to alternative 2's alignment could further improve the balance, which led to the development of alternative 2A. Next slide, please. Alternative 2A is essentially the same as alternative 2. The biggest difference is that the north and south legs of the Kent Street West intersection were shifted minorly to better fit the available space. And we had a better idea of what might be a better fit from the knowledge gained from PIC number 1. Next slide, please. So with alternative 2A, we took it to a discretionary meeting for parties located adjacent to the Kent Street intersection. And at that meeting, we had representatives from the Ross Memorial Hospital, Dentistry on Kent and Ambassador Apartments. That's the apartment building located in the southeast quadrant of the intersection. So, and most of the concerns that we received at this meeting were believed to be mitigable at the detailed design stage. However, there were some concerns, as I've noted here, that were believed to warrant further investigation. Later on, additional technical studies would be completed to investigate these and their findings would ultimately support our recommended preferred alternative. Perhaps the most important takeaway from the stakeholder meeting, though, was the discovery that Ambassador Apartments has an underground parking structure that extended further out from its above-grade footprint. The existing underground parking structure essentially extends out to the right-of-way limits at the southeast quadrant of the intersection. And our alternative 2A, which was our, at that time, our most current refined alternative, was proposing to install a driving lane over top of it. Next slide, please. So to avoid building a driving lane over top of an underground structure, we undertook further refinement of alternative 2 and this came to be alternative 2B. Now, alternative 2B was essentially the same as alternative 2A, except the number of northbound legs in the, sorry, the number of northbound lanes in the south leg of the Kent Street West intersection was reduced by 1. Because this newest lane configuration was somewhat different from what had been recommended by the previous corridor study, we completed additional traffic analysis to confirm that with the reduction of the number of lanes, the resulting level of service would still be expected to address the problem statement. And we found that it did. Another benefit of this additional traffic analysis was that we were able to consider a later horizon year to match that of the Transportation Master Plan that was being completed at the same time. Fortunately for the Colburn Street West intersection, the recommended lane configuration of the previous corridor study was found to be feasible. And the further refinement there simply considered an east-centered west shift of the intersection to try to get a better idea of what might best fit there. Next slide, please. So what's shown here is alternative 2B, which, as I said, is essentially the same as alternative 2A, except the Kent Street intersection has one less northbound lane in its south leg. Next slide, please. At the Colburn Street West intersection, a west-centered and east alignment were considered by alternatives 1 to 3. The roadway footprints of each are represented by the various colored outlines shown here. The impacts of the properties of each quadrant were found to be fairly similar between these alternatives, except for the northwest quadrant where alternative 3 was believed to provide a bit more benefit to the residential and commercial properties located there. Next slide, please. So from these refined alternatives, evaluations of various environments determined a preliminary preferred alternative. For the Kent Street West intersection, it would be alternative 2B with the acceptable reduction of 1 lane in its southeast quadrant. For the Colburn Street intersection, it would be the eastward alignment of alternative 3. That's the one that gave a bit more breathing room to the properties in the northwest quadrant. The preliminary preferred alternative is considered to be the combination of both of these alternatives for their respective intersections. And to accommodate this preliminary preferred alternative, we envisioned that approximately 3,700 square meters of additional property would be required for right-of-way widening, which I have shown on the next slide. This figure generally shows the property requirements that we might expect to support the preliminary preferred alternative. It's shown in red and orange. Now, under existing conditions, the Angeline Street right-of-way has a non-uniform width. And so the additional property required along the corridor would essentially bring the right-of-way width to a uniform 1 equal to its currently widest portion. And that's with the exception of the area of the north leg of the Kent Street intersection, where it's slightly wider than this, just to accommodate the number of lanes that are proposed there. Next slide, please. So now that we had the preliminary preferred alternative, we presented it publicly at PIC number 2. And similar to PIC number 1, the feedback received was considered typical of what would be expected for a road widening project. And overall, there were no concerns that were identified that were believed to significantly alter the evaluation of the design alternatives. The additional investigations I had mentioned before for the Kent Street West stakeholders were completed and their findings were also supportive of the preliminary preferred alternative. And around the time of PIC number 2 was when the city was finalizing their active transportation master plan. So our team had reviewed the ATMP's recommendations for our corridor to determine the feasibility of incorporating the recommendations into our preferred alternative. And subject to detailed design, we believe that most of the ATMP's recommendations can be incorporated into the design to some degree. From this review, we took our findings and we summarized them in a memo and we submitted that to the ATMP implementation team for their consideration. The ATMP implementation team was nice enough to review it and in their review, they didn't identify any significant concerns. identify any significant concerns. And another benefit of their review was that they were able to provide some direction on the preferred location of the multi-use paths, which I have shown on the next slide, So, subject to detailed design, the likely location of the multi-use path is shown in the purple dash line. It's expected that the multi-use path can be accommodated to the west and south of the Colburn Street intersection. Along Angeline Street, the multi-use path would extend southerly through Colburn Street, generally to about the north entrance of the Ross Memorial Hospital's parking lot. Space constraints, especially potential impacts of the hospital's ambulance bay area south of that, would make it infeasible, we believe at this time, to extend it further than that. Next slide, please. So all of this brings us to where we are today in the MCA process, which is a flowchart showing that on the screen right now. We're currently at the point where the preferred alternative has been identified, and we've prepared our supporting project file report. If this project file report is endorsed by council, we would move to a 30-day review period where it's made available to the public and reviewing agencies, after which, barring any significant concerns, it would then proceed to the implementation phase. Next slide, please. And that concludes today's presentation. I believe there's an opportunity for questions and comments. I'm going to pass it back to Corey to help direct that.
So first, can I get a motion to receive? Deputy Mayor McDonald, Counselor Perry. Questions, Counselor Ashmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to presenters. You mentioned about, well, Angeline Street is a lot of businesses, a lot of... And of course, a lot of the Ross Memorial Hospital. And specifically to that, I was formerly on the hospital board and spent a day with paramedics in an ambulance a few years ago. And I know that the hospital has always been trying to get a second entrance into the ambulance bay. And because they're one of the few hospitals that the paramedics have to do a three-point turn in order to get out. They need to get out quickly, and it takes some... Too many seconds extra, too many minutes sometimes to get out. Are we working with the hospital to get, finally get that second entrance in the ambulance bay because they really need that? And they've been working so hard, and it's been so frustrating for them to get that so the ambulances can get in and out quicker instead of having to rely on the one entrance? Just wondering if you had any... Anything positive for that with the hospital?
Maybe I'll take a first stab at this one and then pass it over to the consultant. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, I can confirm, we've met with the hospital on multiple occasions throughout this process. If council approves the preferred solution in front of them at the next council meeting, then we can work towards detailed design and working with the hospital for additional entrances or their needs. Alex, did you want to add anything?
I think I'd just add that, in addition to that stakeholder meeting we had previously with the members surrounding the Kent Street West intersection, we've also had further discretionary consultation with members of the hospital earlier this year. And to that, I would just say, we've made a commitment to them to work alongside them through the detailed design stage to address some of the other concerns that they had. From memory, the biggest concern they've had is just maintaining the interest they have, especially during construction. That's not to say maybe they're looking for opportunities to improve that, and we'll continue to work with them through the detailed design process to see what might be available to them.
Thank you.
Counselor Warren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to make sure I've got the correct information. At Angeline, you're reducing the number of lanes. Did I hear that? And I'm just wondering how that can be a better thing?
No.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor. On page four of the report is kind of a detailed explanation of the proposed preferred solutions. Lanes are not going to be reduced.
Counselor Joyce.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for the presentation. I was having trouble following it first because it's very detailed slides, but I pulled it up on my laptop here, but then I lost the flow. So my question is, does... In, as far as lanes are concerned, I, you know, I went through that part and it makes sense, and I'm not a traffic expert, so I leave that to you guys anyways. Is there... Sorry. What's the word here? A multi-use pathway connecting? Has that been maintained? And what's the... And the width of a multi-use pathway, is the two meters? Is that the correct width?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe, Alex, you could provide a detailed explanation to the counselor.
Yep. So the width of the multi-use path is planned to be 2.4 meters wide. And it's also going to have a 0.6-meter buffer between the back of the curb and the roadside of the path. And that's based off of the lower range provided in the active transportation master plan. Unfortunately, due to space constraints, we're looking at the lower range of the values that they recommend there. The multi-use path along Angeline Street is proposed to come from Colburn Street south to about the entrance of the hospital's parking lot. Beyond there, that's where the intersection begins to flare out, and we start looking at greater impacts of the adjacent properties. As noted, that's on the east side is more so to do with the ambulance bay there, and on the west side, we start encroaching more into the dentist's office that's there. And just for a multitude of reasons there, the space doesn't permit it to go further south. But that's just at this current stage. Of course, we'll look for any opportunities to incorporate it as we get to the detailed design stage. Does that address your question?
It does, but it does raise concerns because I'm looking at a map here that our proposed cycling improvement map is a multi-use pathway connecting these streets through its entirety. But I understand there's challenges there with space. Also, 0.6 meters between that pathway and the street. All I can think of now is snow removal challenges between sidewalk and road. Thank you.
It just means you and Counselor McDonald will take an extra 10 minutes to get home.
I don't live there. But I'm thinking of Counselor Dobell's constituents and keeping those in mind for it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Thank you, through you. Nice, good report. Thank you very much for that. This is way overdue. For years, this intersection has been a problem for many, many years, so it's really nice to see something happening. Just from Kent Street on Angeline going south to Broad Street, just explain to me how that because there's two streets there that people are coming out. Is there anything being done at that, those two streets?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I will pass to the consultant.
I think all I'd say is that the limits for our project, they end at Broad Street and Roosevelt Street there. So we're simply looking at the south leg of the Kent Street intersection and it's tapered back to existing conditions, generally at those intersections of Broad Street and Roosevelt.
Okay. Thanks. I'll have a look at that a little closer there. It's hard getting out there now for people living on Broad Street and so on, and they're coming at each other and more traffic. But anyway, I'm sure you guys have looked at it. Thanks for that report, and good luck. Good luck getting it done.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments, I'll... And we have a motion to receive and forward to the next regular council meeting. All in favor? Thank you. That's passed. We now have the report, ENG 2025020. Manager Purdy, did you want to address the report? Or you're good with it as is? So, counsel, what's your wish on the report? Somebody want to make a motion? Counselor Richardson? And Counselor Ashmore? Do you want to speak to it? No? Counselor Ashmore, do you want to speak to it? Okay.
The motion is printed, I take it?
Yeah? All in favor? And that's passed. Counselor Dobell, you can come back. We're now moving into consent matters. Counselor Richardson, 811 is not extracted, so we're going to pass it on the consent agenda. You don't need to go anywhere if you don't...
You still have to in case you're by consent agreeing to the recommendation, so she should leave for the whole time of the consent.
Okay. So on the consent matters, that all the proposed recommendations shown in Section 81 of the agenda be approved by the committee of the whole in order that they appear on the agenda sequentially numbered and forwarded to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting, save and accept items 8.1.3 and 8.1.4. I have a mover and a seconder. Counselor Dobell, Counselor Perry. Questions, comments? All in favor? And that's passed. Counselor Richardson, you can come back. And we'll move to 813. And you have the first extraction for that, followed by Counselor Ashmore.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. The reason for me extracting it is, you know, we're looking at development in the city of Coorthalakes, and this report really does provide some clear guidelines to the developers and shows, you know, where public use can be. And the new window street road promotes, you know, safety and a buffer to residents. I was just wondering if we could even have an example of how we would be using this moving forward in our development. I just feel like it's a good news story because we are being proactive when it comes to development.
Q. Director Rojas, did you want to take that question?
Sure. Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So just first, a definition of a window street. Maybe we should back up. So window streets are used in conjunction with another street, either usually a collector and arterial road. So typically, before, we had window streets. And if you had a collector road or a major road, you sort of had two choices. You could have houses and driveways fronting onto that collector road, which causes problems. Or you could have an internal road where the house backs onto that collector road and they build a fence, which creates sort of a tunnel effect. So to get rid of both of those concerns, you build a parallel road beside the collector road. That's single-loaded, meaning on one side of the road, there's houses, and on the other side of the road, there is a collector road. So you have two roads side by side. That eliminates any conflict with driveways. It allows traffic to be maximized on the collector road, and it doesn't create that tunnel effect. We don't really have a lot or any in Coorthalakes. I think the first one is at the Craft subdivision, adjacent to Colburn Street. There's a small little window street there. There are more planned for in both Tribute, Craft, Flato, and other larger subdivisions. So as we grow, that's a mechanism. We introduce a window street in order to keep the function of the collector arterial road pure and then provide safety for the residents because now they're on a local road, not an arterial collector road. By doing that, because we have two back-to-back or side-by-side streets, we could slightly reduce the boulevard of the one street because we're going to have two boulevards side by side. So we keep the integrity of the collector road boulevard, and we slightly reduced the boulevard of the window street by about three meters. So that's where we're going, or two meters. That's where we're going from a 20-meter right-of-way to an 18-meter right-of-way on a window street. I hope that answers. You see them a lot in Durham, York region. Coorthalakes, again, doesn't have many, with the exception of the one on Craft in Phase One that's just being built or has recently been built. But with the anticipated growth with the MZO's within Lindsay, I think the window street would aid in the traffic flow and safety of those communities.
Q. Are you fine? Okay. Counselor Ashmore, you also had it extracted, which your question answered or something else?
Yeah, just another little thing. My question, I guess, would be to the director. Not only does it apply to large developments, but even smaller existing neighborhoods, I'm dealing with one south of Bob Cajun where there's a right-of-way, which is basically your right to pass over that lane way to get to your property. They're trying to figure out how they can get services. You know, they pay taxes. They pay taxes. And my question is, or my concern, I guess, is that will we still be able to, for an example, I'll give you an example, Lilac Road in Emily Township, from Peace Road to Highway 7, it was basically closed up. And then we found that there was historical maintenance records that said that we did look after it and the former municipality. So that part of that road is now serviced through basic services. So what I was asking is, or just wanted to make sure, is that if we have cases come up now and again, will we be able to, you know, research, in this case, Township of Verlum as an example, or it could be any other township or town or village in Coorthalakes, whether they had... This right-of-way had historical maintenance and that they would be restored to these people. So that was what I wanted to make sure, that this wouldn't shut the door to that.
Well, I think it's completely off-topic. This is dealing with new developments mostly, where we're going to narrow one road, but we're going to create another road to solve a traffic problem. I think what you're talking about is something entirely different, and we can deal with it in another way. But I don't think it falls under what this report is dealing with.
Okay, so it's a different type of right-of-way, basically? Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So you're good with that? Either one of you want to move it as printed? Counselor Richardson? Counselor Ashmore, do you want to second that? Thank you. No more questions or comments? All in favor? And that passes. Moving on to 814, which is source-separated organics update and consideration. Counselor Ashmore, you extracted that.
Yes, just a question to Heather, just through you. Just looking at this, so basically, those who are on the project, namely Lindsay, Bob Cajun, Fama Falls, and Omimi, they will be, have to go from two bags to one, just in that specific area that they're picking up the source-separated organics.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is the recommendation in the report.
Okay. And secondly, are we looking at, I know we saw a presentation to council where they're looking at increasing the landfill size, which, you know, we're trying to decrease when we are decreasing the amount of waste that we're producing. But are we looking at, for example, we have a world-class facility here, it's actually in Ward 6, just east of Lindsay. Maryland Farms has, near Rayboro, they have a digester. Do we... I know we talked about this before, a couple of years ago. Do we partner with... Can we partner with a facility like that where we can, you know, use this for energy? And it could benefit us immensely if we partnered with them.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The source-separated organics do go to an off-site facility for processing, but they are brought into the city of Coorthalakes to generate energy at an aerobic digestion facility.
Okay, so that whereabouts is the main facility? And so you don't use that facility? It's because it's a private facility? Is that why it's not utilized at all? It's because it's a private facility, is that why it's not utilized at all, or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there was a procurement process that we undertook to procure processing for the organics, and so that is the result of that process. But it is a local facility, and it does generate electricity for the community.
Fine, thanks.
What do you want to do with the report?
Well, I, I just, I don't know what the reaction is, like, maybe people aren't aware. I mean, a lot of people read the agendas, but are they aware that we're going from two to one? And there may be, you know, some people that may not be happy with it. I mean, I understand the reasoning behind it, but I'm just saying, just be prepared for the backlash.
Well, I don't think there will be one, because, for instance, I do source-separated organics now. I'm lucky if I get a full garbage bag to put out once a month, never mind once a week. And I think Deputy Mayor McDonald wants to speak to this.
Yeah, through you, thank you. It works, in Lindsay, for sure. I personally do this, and I've gone down to less than a half a bag of garbage, so it does work, and it's definitely going to help when everybody gets on board and starts using it, because I'm proof in the pudding that it works really well, so.
Q. Anybody want to move this report? Counselor Warren, Counselor Joyce, you want to speak to it?
Just briefly, I think this is a really good idea. Most of your garbage, or maybe 50% of your garbage is compostable, so it just makes sense that we go down to one bag for those areas. Thank you.
Q. Counselor Joyce, do you want to speak to it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you through you, being on the Waste Management Committee. This is not new to me, it's, the staff have thoroughly researched this, the committee has recommended it as well. It's a good plan, and we'll all benefit from it. Thank you.
Q. So, we have a motion and a seconder, all in favor? And that passes. Item, we don't have anything under new or other business. We have 9.1, which is memorandum regarding minimum maintenance standards. Counselor Ashmore, that's your memo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing this to be on the table today. So, I'm happy to see a report come back. I'm asking for your support, if we could get a report back early next year, before the end of the first quarter, so by the end of March 2026. The reason being is that people have asked me, and I personally feel that we should really look at this here. I think we should also engage the services internally of our strategy management. We have a lean six sigma team that could look at efficiencies as well, and perhaps even engage a third party to look at it. But to me, when I'm, when I tell people, why do we do, why is this road done this way? Why is it done at a certain time? And it's always MMS, Minimum Maintenance Standards. And I, to me, this is just my opinion, and mine, could be somebody else's too, but I don't like the word minimum, I like the word maximum, and I'm trying to tell the people that, you know, we're trying, we're, to me, anyways, I would like to have maximum maintenance, just to show the people that we are here to do the best job that we can, and we're working hard at it. But it all starts here at the council table, that we will be showing the people that we want the maximum, we're going to do the maximum job that we can do with the resources that we have, and there's ways of looking at, we can analyze it and see how we could come up with, in this case here, if we could, instead of categorizing roads into different classifications, we could make sure that these collector roads, as they're called, as it says in the, as it says in the report, there's a report about transportation systems, the, the, the roads, not the arterial roads, but the class four to six roads, they're basically the backbone of our transportation system, because they get us, they get the people to the highways, like Highway 36, or Highway 7, or Highway 115, or any of the other major roads that we have. So, I just ask for your support for this, please, thank you.
Is there a seconder? Counselor Perry, are you seconding it?
No, just wondering if perhaps this could start at the Roads Task Force, have a home there for discussion, debate, and then perhaps come to council, similar to some of the work that other task force members are doing, including Counselor Warren.
Thank you. I don't know. Manager Porter, do you have anything to say about, I believe that about a couple of years ago, we did look at maintenance standards, and it came back that we had increased our maintenance standard, and we got sued, and the legal people at the time, and the outside lawyer, said, do not go beyond the minimum maintenance standards as your standard. You can do the work, but you don't go beyond your standard, you don't declare it, because you leave yourself liable in every instance to be sued. That's my recollection. Do you have any other information to share with us?
To you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. That's a good summary of exactly the legal opinion we received. Minimum maintenance standards is just that. It's, in essence, a legal defense. It gives us a grounds to stand on in which, if we meet those standards that we have at defense in court, because that's the obligation of any municipality, is to meet those standards. When we start to differentiate or advance by providing that service or changing levels of service, it opens the municipality up to liabilities.
But there is nothing to say that we can provide a higher level of service, we just don't declare it, that our standard is a minimum maintenance standard, but we could provide a higher maintenance of service.
Yes, to you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we can provide a higher level of service, however, after a sustained period of time, then that now becomes our new level of service, even by practice. So, by practice, we, in essence, have set that level. So, whenever we increase levels of service, even through practice, even not on paper, we end up achieving that. So, in court, we could be brought forward and asked, okay, how are we servicing this road? And we would have to discuss that and bring that forward. So, it would then become the new standard or new level.
And if the Roads Task Force took this on to comment on in their final report, that would be a suitable thing to do.
To you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it'd be great for us to sit down as a group, we could look at it. One thing is, we would look to put some parameters around it, because there's many services that Public Works provides, and if there's some that are more important than others, we could strategically pick those and look at different pricing models and what have you. So, everything from grading to pothole patching to winter control, all those would require resources, people, staff, equipment, materials. Again, it could have environmental impact, so if we're changing winter levels of service, we're going to be applying more salts. So, again, there's a variable, there's many variables that we'd have to consider.
Q. What did you want to say, Counselor Perry?
Sure, just that we've talked about this term, this unfortunate term. No one likes the term minimum when it comes to standard or customer service. My understanding, though, is it's an unfortunate turn of phrase from the province, and minimum simply meaning basic or acceptable. And it really is a wording issue, and we have been around this before, but I would, you know, invite the counselor to consider, as others have, bringing it to Roads Task Force, and it would automatically come back here in the report.
Q. So, Counselor, you don't have a seconder for your report, so it won't go forward, but you'll have an out by bringing it to the Roads Task Force to be dealt with there. Is that fine?
Well, if it goes to the Roads Task Force, will it be analyzed, and then we'll get a reporter?
That, I think what Manager Porter said was, it would be most appropriate to do that, and they could bring forward the necessary information.
Okay.
Thank you. So, item 10, can I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Warren, Counselor Dobell, all in favor?